Four candidates, the four final candidates for district administrative position before us. They were interviewed separately by the board of managers, a staff team, and a small panel of community representatives. Each of the three groups met separately for an hour with each of the four candidates. Each of them asked distinct questions and then those, that advice was brought back or that feedback was brought back to the board by a spokesperson for each of those two groups. We did not audio or video record the earlier portion of the meeting under advice from our consultant that it is not typically done or in an interview process for hiring. This part of the board meeting, however, is being audio and video recorded. All opening, all meetings, of course, are open to the public. And we encourage the public to attend. However, the board has not taken public comment during this evening save those members of the public who are on one of the panels. Mr. David Unmott from Springstead, if you would go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board and the staff, I'll just make some preliminary observations. I know the hour is late, but I do want to make a couple reflections based on experience that I have. As we briefed at four o'clock in that room anticipating the events of this evening, I think they went very well. You know, we lost a little bit of time, but that's not unusual. That's very typical. I think the two reports that were done by the two committees were consistent with what I typically see. It's clear that they took their responsibilities seriously and the feedback that I had in the hallway and in the conversations was very positive about the engagement. Clearly, the staff in this district is invested in this process as they've been here all night and they took their delegation of assignment very seriously. So there's others things that could be said, but I will, I'll just stop at that. The questions that I ask at this point to a policy board that's considering the hiring of an administrator at any level, any size, organization, small, medium, or large is two. Do you have enough information, in your opinion, to proceed to make a decision? And the second question tied to that, if not, what information do you want me to continue to obtain in order to help you make that decision? So that's the first question you answer. If you answer that question one way, you know, there's an action. If you answer that question another way, there's a, there's another action. So, Madam Chair, that's the question for the board from my perspective.
Managers, do we have enough information, do each one of us have enough information to make this decision tonight?
I believe we do.
Is there anyone who has a contrary opinion? Very well, then let's move forward. Yes.
Madam Chair, then I think the next step, unless the board disagrees, is that you, you do a brief kind of seven, seven-member observation about the candidates themselves, just like the community members and the staff team. I think that would be a healthy observation if you so choose. And then the next step then would be to decide on a course of a decision. And I know that you have some alternatives that the committee has talked about, so that'll play itself out.
Manager Olson, would you like to offer observations on the candidates?
I'm still absorbing. I am absorbing about an inch here. And I thought they were all well-prepared and did a good job in terms of what we asked them to do. And so I'm, I'm absorbing. I'll just leave it at that for now.
Manager Casal?
Well, being on our little work group, I certainly have had a lot more time to absorb than Manager Olson had.
Can you talk to the microphone?
Oh, not coming through. I've had, you know, much more time to absorb it studying their resumes and deciding which ones to interview and then which ones to bring forward. So I've been immersed in this. But it, what I would say is interesting in trying to keep an open mind was that of the four, which I all thought, and you know, we all, the three of us agreed were the best to come forward, that one happened to perform better than I expected. And that's always nice because it made me feel like, well, I still have an open mind. I, I think they, I think they're all excellent candidates and a couple, a couple stood out to me as, as favorites. I think they all had excellent, they all had excellent knowledge. They all seemed to be passionate about wanting the position, some more than others, or different ways, I should say, different motivations. I think I would agree with the overview that the two groups presented to us as being, as being accurate and it's like I didn't hear somebody say something and I went, really? Where'd that come from? So that, that made me feel like I was on the same page with a bigger group of people. So, but rather than mine, I'm not sure how much I want to say because I don't want to overly influence the group because I've had so much background with them. So I think I would rather hear more from those who had a first hearing tonight.
Thank you. Manager Blix?
Yeah, well, on that note, I'll pass for now as well. You know, interested in hearing from others.
Manager Miller?
First of all, I want to thank the committee for the hard work you did.
Not a committee.
Pardon?
Not a committee.
It's a work group.
A work group. How could I make a mistake? The work group and the consultant, I think that is just a superior job. It's, I think it was clear that any one of them would be adequate in perform, perform a job as administrator. The, one that stood out for me in its, because my point of view is, I'm not a, I'm not a scientist, I'm not a specialist, but I've been on this board nearly 20 years, counting when I served in the U.S. and since 2010 or whenever else, when I was reappointed. And I'm, I'm a generalist with a deep understanding of, of local units of government. Been on many boards and authorities and stuff over the years. And I'm looking for somebody that not necessarily has got the, the science and technical background because we have that in the staff. And we're, are we, can we mention names at this point?
Yeah. You, you're not obligated to tell who your preference is.
Oh, well, I will.
You certainly can talk about the candidates and your opinions about them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just tell the one that stood out for me from my point of view is, is Erdol. He hasn't got the water background, but he, he knows the community. He, he's familiar with the civic and political and business leaders. He's got a style that, that can open up all kinds of doors and extend the, the influence of the district and the partnerships beyond the parochial interests of, of water. And he will, I think, because of being a generalist, you'll enable the, the staff to more accomplish their given assignments in not be involved in, in all the water issues with the relationship issues, which are more, I think, at this point in time with the projects that were taken on and the size of the projects, it's the relationship building with all the other units of, of government, both the participating communities, 29 cities, but also the legislature and in the, in the federal government. And that, that's, but I believe any one of them would, would serve us adequately. But because of my point of view, I'm, I'm really impressed with Erdol.
Thank you. Manager Shackleton?
Do you want to?
I'll wait till last one.
Okay. So clearly, Managers Blix, Casal and I had, have had more of an opportunity to both interact but also think about these candidates. And my sense of it is that we have, and I'll go through, I'll just kind of go, I'll go through all four of them based on the order that we interviewed them. I thought that Lars was very studied. He doesn't have, he, he does not have a background in water, but he does have a background in science and has a background in education and in, through the zoo pitching the concept of supporting evidence-based science for an outcome. And I think that's, that's positive. Brent, I saw, I see is very active. He's clearly energetic, is excited, also has a background in science, has experience managing staff. Paul, I see is kind of an academic. He, he has the experience managing, he has the background in water. He has done work in this field, knows it very intimately, especially in Minnesota. Jay, I saw is engaged. Like he is really engaged in the trenches doing this work in, in Washington County and has management experience, also is very familiar with the Minnesota water and the Minnesota water world. That's how I view these candidates and how I think about these candidates. I, if it's appropriate, should I talk about kind of my biases in terms of what I'm, how I'm approaching this or do you want me to hold off on that?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Board member, once you're done with your opinions, then you'll go to preference in voting and decision. So I don't think you need to do that yet. I'd wait till everybody speaks.
Thank you.
Manager Hawkins?
I'll take them in the same, in the order that we had them. I felt that, I guess I'll just pick out some, some of the key things that stuck out in my mind about each one of them. And I think Mr. Erdol has a lot of good experience based on what his experiences at the zoo have been that I think are transferable to the, to the watershed district. I think he had, as far as the balanced urban ecology concept assignment, I think he had one of the better presentations and especially when he was talking about the challenges. He had some really good insights as far as what the implications of, of that policy might be from a, from the perspective of challenges. And I think he did probably the best job in talking about those challenges. Mr. Mahalik, I think, I think that the kind of, the thing that I came away with is I don't think he knows the district very well. The other ones had done a much better job of understanding what the, you know, what the district is about and what we do and those kinds of things. And he was much more, talked about the district in much, much more general terms than some of the other, other folks did. I think he has good educational background and made some, some good comments. One of them was that people are the same everywhere, we just need to understand people. I think that's a very true statement and, and fits in just about any situation you might be working in. Mr. Nelson, I think he did the best job in making his presentation on the balanced urban ecology. I think it was very thoughtful, very well put together. He has a good grasp of the issues and the challenges. He was, I think, stood out as being the most comfortable. I don't think he was at all nervous, very laid back, very comfortable, very thoughtful about what he was saying and what he was trying to, the ideas he was trying to convey and came across very strongly that way. And Mr. Riggs, I think he came across, at least to me, he had a really good attitude, very knowledgeable. He came across to be, to me, as being the, more of a go-getter, but maybe in a little bit different, a little bit different way. You could do that quietly and you can do it more energetic, more energetically, and I think he would probably be a little more energetic. He's engaged. And I think he had, each one of the candidates was asked if they had questions for the board. And I think Mr. Riggs had some of the best questions for the board. They were, they were to the point about what the board's vision is and, you know, where does the organization want to go in the future. We didn't respond to that individually, but I think they were, they were really, very good questions and questions that I think it's very important for the, the district to be thinking about and to have those answers in, in choosing a candidate. Because I think the candidate that we choose should be in, in line with that vision and where the board sees itself going in the next decade and beyond.
Thank you. I was impressed, before you talk about the candidates, with the search process, with the way that this entire day has been structured. Kudos to staff and to our CAC members and all of our consultants for their participation and staff for the organization and Mr. Unmott as well. And my thanks to the, the group, the working group that did the preliminary work and to all board members who participated so thoroughly. I saw Mr. Erdol as having a great experience with large budgets, large staff, making teams work together and being able to, I think, effectuate the work of the watershed district very well, as well as knowing the community. And he talked about funding. I think that's an important thing to understand, that, that funding is certainly an issue. The next person we spoke to was Mr. Mahalik, tremendously energetic and enthusiastic and knowledgeable. I was impressed with his balanced ecology presentation. And I suspect that it would be an issue for him to come from another state. In here, he would, he would learn those things quickly. Mr. Riggs, I'm sorry, next we talked to Mr. Nelson, local knowledge, works with the federal water conservation district. I'm, I wasn't, lots of local knowledge and perhaps a little more low-key, I think one of our reporting groups said that too, doesn't have as large a staff or as much direct supervisory experience as this position would require. Mr. Riggs, again, knowledgeable, experienced, local knowledge, good candidate. He was less supervisor experience, not familiar with, not working with a tiered management. It seemed like it was all one-level management, all direct reports. So perhaps not as organizationally learned as the administrator here would need to be. I, I'll go back to Mr. Erdol and a kind of a level of sophistication, I think, about working with organizations was quite impressive to me. And do we want to loop back?
Can you go now?
Yes. Manager Olson?
Thank you. I was impressed with the professionalism on the part of Lars Erdol. He had a, a way of communicating and relating to the issues that we were interested in in a very effective way. I wasn't, I, I was a little bit concerned about his willingness to accommodate us when it came to interfacing with staff. I, on that issue, which was a question I asked of all three of them, Paul Nelson was the first one to say that he wanted to establish the staff priorities, not us. And that was further echoed in a very definite way by Jay Riggs. He was adamant about that, wasn't going to be any other way. So that was a, there was a very interesting comeback. And I know the first two candidates had a willingness to accommodate the board of managers in terms of interfacing with staff. I thought that Paul Nelson exhibited some pretty strong knowledge about water and issues with future water problems like climate change and, and had a passion for the resources. But in terms of just an overall feeling, I would, I would put Mr. Riggs in a position of knowing our business flat out. He just knows our business. And it didn't matter whether the question was asked about Nert ponds or, or how things evolved, he didn't have to have anybody define anything for him. And so that, to me, was a very strong base to start with. We talked about a three-month window to get to know everybody and whatever. Well, I don't think any of that time is going to be needed for, you know, his water background. So I was, I was very encouraged by that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Manager Blix?
Two pastors, yeah. You want to go first?
Sure. I found that Mr. Erdol's, I thought he would, had incredible amount of experience in, with his science and, and background in government that he would bring to bear for us. However, in comparison to, you know, when you look at him in comparison to the other, all of the other candidates, he just seemed like it would take him a lot longer to get up to speed to be able to be as effective of a leader for us in comparison to all three of the others. Although, you know, Brent, coming from Wisconsin, would have also a little time to, you know, get up to speed as well, although I felt that his, he had a tremendous amount of background in such a variety of areas that I thought we could benefit from. He seemed to have done such a variety of different things in terms of his vast amount of government experience in, in collaborating with lots of different units of government, trying to bring groups together and, and it seemed as though he had accomplished a tremendous amount. And I was really impressed by the work that he had done in, in a lot of different areas. So I felt like, yes, he's from Wisconsin.
Wait, that's a feeling.
But, you know, it could be worse. I don't know. On the other hand, I felt that, you know, Jay and Paul obviously could bring their experience and local understanding of water management and they would both be able to, you know, hit the ground running, so to speak. But I found that Jay was obviously a lot more passionate and enthusiastic about the job, just overall. And Paul was kind of like take it or leave it kind of person. Pretty much, he said that. So, yeah.
Manager Casal?
I think I'll go in the reverse order. Jay Riggs, I would agree with what everyone has said about him, that he's extraordinary high level of energy, knows water in and out and could do or has done any one of the staff's jobs because of the organization he's been in. He's had to do that. You mentioned it being a very flat organization because he doesn't really have, just because the way that organization is funded, it's like he's one person coordinating all these different resources, none of which he really has a whole lot of control over, which is very different than the way this organization is, is run and funded. And I thought it was kind of interesting, some of the questions that we asked that were, I think somewhat leading to, to help him talk a little bit about what, how it would be different here. I, I felt he didn't quite get that as well as the others and that's consistent with, with the opinion that I had when, when, when we met him the first time. But very impressed with his, impressed with his knowledge. Although we have such a, we have such a talent. If you have a person running an organization like that where everybody's coming and going all the time, you almost have to be an expert in every area because you may be the only one who has that at any given moment. And I, I don't, I don't think we need that, that here. And I think it could be frustrating for him to be more of, a little more removed in orchestrating the management. I think that's a transition that would be harder to make than say, wait, to me, that would be way harder to make than say somebody come from out of state. Then Paul Nelson, I'll have to say that he did much better in tonight's interview than he did when we interviewed him for the first time. He was, he certainly was the most comfortable in his own skin, so to speak. Just very laid back and he, you know, he knew a whole lot about everything. I think his management style would be very, very calm. And he's had a lot of, he's had a lot of experience. He also comes from a WMO. But he, he was very articulate about seeming to understand the differences between a WMO and a, and a watershed district and seemed to appreciate the benefits of, of the watershed district model and the benefits of the funding. I also really appreciated what he had to say about the circumstances behind the collapsing of the W, the individual WMOs and being rolled into the Cowdings WMO because I had heard it in a different way before. And tonight, when he said it, it was like, oh, I, now I understand why it had to happen. He was able to tell us the, the benefits of it. I, as far as, you know, the ends of the energy spectrum, Jay would be way over there and Paul would be way over there. Sorry. And then Brent, I think I would agree with everything Manager Blix said about Brent. He certainly has been what we talk about as our urban ecology. When I read his resume, when I, you know, read what had been done, all the experiences he'd had, he's, he's had the experience of bringing cross jurisdictional partnerships together quite, quite successfully for, for quite a while. Not unlike at all what we're doing, knocked out of the urban, an urban corridor in, in Hopkins and in St. Louis Park. So I was very, very impressed with that this time and, and originally. I think he was a little more nervous and, but a lot less nervous. I think he was a little more nervous and, but a lot less nervous than he was the first time we interviewed him.
That's true.
He was, if he came across you as being nervous tonight, it was, he was much more comfortable than he was the first time. And the first time, he had so much to say, he had a hard time staying on task and he was told that. And tonight, I thought he did a really good job of being succinct. And that's what I wanted to see, you know, was he able to be succinct? And so I was glad to see that in him. I think that, I don't think there would, I think, yes, there would be some learning curve for him, but not, I don't think a terribly, a terribly great one. It's not like he's coming from Colorado or, let's say, Arizona where everything is completely different. But I think he's, he's got really good knowledge that way. And he sounded like he had a really good, I liked all the different ways he answered the questions about management styles and team building and delegation and not macro-managing. And the question I asked and he wasn't sure how he wanted to answer, he just, he missed the example I wanted him to give. But he, he had had a person who worked for, when he came to the job, he had to work with somebody who had applied for the job and didn't get it. So a candidate who didn't get, an internal candidate who didn't get the job, he had to work with. And at the beginning, that candidate was really not very happy. And he was able to work with that person and turn him around to the point where that person is now his most trusted associate. And that person came around and said, this was the right decision, you got, you should have gotten the job. So that was his, that was the example I wanted to give. He remembered another one that he couldn't talk about. So I was really impressed that, because that would be a really difficult circumstance to come into an organization and have somebody be really upset that you got the job and I didn't. Lars, he, his, I, the kind of things that Andrew Miller said about him, I would echo his breadth, his general, generalist approach, his connections to the community, to the state, his, his deep roots in his family of political connections are very, very impressive. And he has grown up in an environment of public service his whole life and it has been, as he said, discussed over the dinner table. He talked about being, said, well, I'm one of seven, I know what those dinner table conversations were like, I know exactly what he was talking about. And my wife was terrified of him, just like he said his wife was. But, and I really, really thought his, to me, I got the sense he had the best orchestral capacity, you know, being the maestro to, to really conduct, but not thinking he should get in there and be the first violinist. And, and I almost think that not having that water specialty and being really comfortable with that he doesn't mean to be the be-all and end-all of all knowledge about the water could be a really great thing for the staff because I can see him really, really, and a lot of people say, well, you know, I want to develop staff and I want them to flourish and all that. But I think in his circumstance, because he really is comfortable with the idea that he doesn't have to be an expert in everything, that he, the staff, our staff would, as talented as they are, would really soar under his leadership. And I think, and the way, the experience he's had in communal, community relations and government relations, given our urban ecology and what we've talked about, all the different partnerships that we want to make, I think he'd just slip in like a glove and making relationships in that area. So I was very, very impressed with him in those areas.
All right, thank you. Everyone has commented, Andrew Shekelton?
You know, I guess I'd like to ask a question, in part to help focus where we're going here. Magic Alkins mentioned that we should do, I'll paraphrase, I'm sorry if I butchered it, but, and correct me if I got it wrong, that our hires should match or reflect our vision for where we want this organization to go. And that was, I, that for me kind of triggered the question of, when I looked at these candidates, I kind of categorized them into folks that had a greater degree of science knowledge and folks that had a greater degree of management knowledge. And obviously, there was a lot of overlap. And I thought this, these four had, all had a background at some degree in science and all had a background and experience in management. And when I looked at them, it gets to what you said, Bill, some of these candidates could hit the ground running, in part because they have done the job of folks basically out there, our staff. And others have not. And I guess the question is, what is more important in terms of the vision of where we want our organization to go? Do we want an administrator who can do the job of our staff to kind of orchestrate how things happen here and how our vision as a board gets implemented? Or do we want somebody who has management skills and a capacity to learn something new? And I'll, I have my opinion about that, but I'm kind of throwing that out there to get feedback and see what I thought so.
Magic, please.
I just have a question for you about that. So is it, is it for the board to set the vision or is it for the, you know, I mean, because obviously to me, the, some of where I get my inspiration is from the staff. And I, and I look to the, to the staff and the administrator to help bring to us kind of what's going on in the water world because that's not necessarily my expertise, although obviously I, I get out and about on occasion. But, you know what I'm saying is that?
I do.
Is it for, is it the board's vision or is it the, where is that vision going to come from?
I would, I would argue that if you look in statute, they took, the statutes talk about managers and that it is, it's incumbent upon us to provide the vision. If we can, if we can get ideas and inspiration from staff, inspiration from staff is very different from vision. The idea of an urban corridor and what happened, what happened in Hopkins and St. Louis Park, that came from staff and it was brought, I mean, from, from staff no longer working state. And that was brought to bear by the board. And that vision was, has been advanced by the board. But the inspiration came from staff and I'm not looking for, I think it's important to have a visionary staff, but we provide the vision. County commissioners don't look to these folks for, for who they hold responsible for what happens here. They look to us.
At the center of your question, as I heard it was, is it better to have an administrator who can do the work of our staff or administrator who manages? That was the first, first part of your question. And I think that we are sufficiently large and well-endowed and structured in staff that we don't have to have a water person. We saw some excellent water people before us. I wouldn't say that was an essential part of the job. The job is to certainly be able to learn enough to run this organization, to understand what people are talking about, but it's the, the running of the organization and the representation of the organization to the greater world that is more important, to my thinking.
Madam President, members of the board, two, two discussion points. One, I think you're ready based on your conversation, which was, which was good. And I think it's also good for the staff and the people who are participating to hear your thoughts because they shared theirs. Two ways to vote traditionally, one is in a paper ballot or one is in voice. Either one is a standard practice, it's up to whatever you prefer, you prefer to use. Second is either your top one or two or your top two. The nuanced difference is you don't list them in any particular order, one or two, you just list your top two. I think it's best to do that as opposed to one, two, three, four. That's too much. We'll see where we're at with, when it comes to that. I would suggest the district council be the official collector of the tallier, but, you know, I'll turn it back to you for a discussion, board.
Andrew Shekelton.
I think there are pros and cons of written tallies. I think there are pros and cons of verbal tallies. I don't know how they do it in Carver County, but in Hannipin, they do a, they go down, they go down the dais and every commissioner says who their top, top choice is. And once they, once there's a majority in the board that supports a candidate, they can, they move on that. I think it, I mean, we discussed this at a certain point and I think it would make sense that if we did that and we came to a, we came to a place where there was a majority supporting a candidate, we should have a discussion about whether or not that would be the direction that we could go and see if there, if it'd be possible to get a unanimous vote for that. That was something that.
Sure, that can work for whoever it takes.
Mr. Amok, how would you structure it if you were looking for two candidates? How would you structure polling?
Madam President, it would be just the same as, as Manager Shekelton talked about. You'd say candidate X, candidate Y. Or candidate X is one, candidate Y is two. Or if you do Brian's way, it's just candidate X. You know, the goal is to get to the end, however you get to the end.
So we could just do a voice poll with a straw poll essentially without having a motion on the floor to see where the, where the thoughts are.
Correct.
Magic assault.
Thinking about the options that you gave, if we're going to do, do two like that, would it, would there be a benefit for our saying, you know, candidate three and, you know, three and four are my top two, but not say which is your, which is your first? Because you're not really doing the poll the first time around, but you're, you're getting to the point where then maybe the big group is only going to be speaking about, speaking about two. You've narrowed it to two for that final discussion. I'm just asking if it's beneficial to, in that first round, to just say, here's my top two. The next time we talk, we'll talk about which at the top is your top.
We don't need to.
Just asking.
Mr., or Manager Mall, you had your hand up.
It's Frank Choice Holding and I, I just don't believe in it. You end up with outcomes you don't expect or you don't want or that it doesn't satisfy anybody. I think we should just, you know, vote the candidate we want to vote for.
Is that agreeable to the board that we would just do a poll, a voice poll, Mr. Smith would conduct for us and have each of us name who we think the preference, preferred candidate is?
Well, what, excuse me, Madam President, what, what did he suggest?
That we just go online, have each person say who would be their preferred candidate?
Okay.
Without having a motion on the table, just to see where the, where the votes would fall.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Smith?
Well, can I just, I mean, I think four of us have been, have talked about this plan. What, what do you guys feel?
Just one, one other thing I did want to say and that's, I think you're right. I think the group of managers who has worked on this and put the process together, and I think it was generally a pretty good one, have a much better feel for these four candidates than I do because this is the first time I met them. And if there was a flaw in the process, we just got their responses to questions and information this evening as the candidates came. And it would have been nice to have that ahead of time, to be able to read through that and digest that information. So although I tried to catch up on it and read through it during the process today, my impressions of the candidates are primarily based on my first impression of them as individuals who came and that we interact with them. So I'm operating, I think, on a different level than others might be. And I'm, I think you said it even the way I drank my Coca-Cola, is that I did it in a very methodical fashion. I think I probably do everything in a pretty methodical fashion. And so it's, it's better for me to, it would have been better for me to have the information ahead of time so that I could have gone through it and digested and I would have had better questions as well that I could have, that I would have been able to put together that were more specific to the individuals rather than being more generic or questions that came up based on the conversation that we were having. So that puts me in a, in a position where I could narrow it down to two candidates, but I'm not really sure which one of them is the best.
Of the two.
Of the two. Because to me, they're, they're both very qualified, I think, from a knowledge background. But I think their style would be very different. And I don't know which style is the better style. I think it's really for tho, for those two candidates, what it would come down to for me relative, if I was to choose, if I was to make a choice and vote on a candidate. So I just wanted to express that, that I'm feeling a little bit at a disadvantage because of that, where we're at with that information right now.
Magic assault.
I am not methodical. But I've, I haven't met any of these people before. Never heard of them before. You know several of them quite well, apparently.
Well, not that well.
Oh, well.
I've met them before, yes.
Yeah. And, you know, involved in the state stuff and all that stuff. And I didn't interview them and, and I didn't have, but I feel very comfortable with the, with voting for the, for Mr. Erdahl because of the reasons I said before. And I've never met him before and I, you know, didn't even know existed before, I was saying. But I really have a strong feeling that we want somebody with, with a generalist background, vast experience in, in this, this area and multifaceted relationships. And, and I think that the district could, would move, you know, we got all the technical people in place to move it ahead to wherever we want to be, but we haven't got the profile and, and leadership to do that, that I think that we could get with, with Mr. Erdahl.
Mr. Amok, you are going to comment?
No.
Okay. Magic assault.
I'm not going to vote now. I'm just saying, going to say that I feel like I can make a choice for all the reasons that Mr. Alkins said I would probably be, easier for me to make a choice. But I'm, you know, I'm, I'm glad you said what you, what you did say, Manager Alkins, and I understand what we just said about the polling, but I'd be willing to grant you a dispensation to let us know who your, who you talked to are. But I'd be willing to grant you a dispensation to let us know who your top two are. If you don't feel comfortable naming just the one, because I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear from you, you know, which two of those are. So if you're not comfortable telling us just one, I'd at least like to know who your top two are when we do this poll, and not to just remain silent because you're not sure. I don't know how others feel about that, but it's my response to what I thought you said, what's a very thoughtful commentary.
What do you think, Bill? Excuse me? What do you think?
I think that voting tonight, although we went through a lot of work here, is probably not gonna give us the answer that we were hoping we would get. And I think I agree with Manager Calkins that I wouldn't even mind reviewing the data on the sheets I didn't have time to read and talking with a couple of those individuals one more time. So I agree that we may not get the result we want based on where this vision of ours is trying to head if we're not careful.
How long would it take to read through the documents?
Madam Chair.
Manager Shekelton.
Was it two weeks ago that we emailed out the information about how to look at resumes?
Madam President.
It's kind of rhetorical question, because the real question is how many times was it downloaded?
Well, the resumes have been out to the group for a while. The bulk of the information that Manager Calkins was talking about was emailed on Monday and didn't get distributed. So I'm responsible for that. I thought, I assumed it was out. And since it wasn't, then at 4:30 tonight, when it was discovered you didn't have it, that was a surprise to me. So, you know, that's my air. I wrote a note, make sure, you know, confirm it forever from now on. So I did not know you didn't have the three documents. The resumes, you had already. Those were emailed out with you with the question that about a week and a half ago.
Those I've read.
Yeah.
So you were familiar with the candidates?
With the resumes, yeah.
Okay.
But there's a lot of information there.
I would like to try to do a voice poll anyway, a non-binding poll. If you don't feel that you can make a decision, or if you have two candidates, or if you have a top candidate, let's see what we find out. We do that. Mr. Smith?
Manager Olson?
I would say of these four candidates, my top two recommendations would be Lars Erdal and J. Riggs. It would be between those two gentlemen.
Andrew Cassal?
Miss, forget his last name, Lars.
Erdal.
Erdal, thank you.
Andrew Blix?
I would go with Brent and Jay.
Andrew Miller?
Erdal.
Andrew Shekelton?
I liked Brim Halick and Lars Erdal.
Manager Calkins?
I'm gonna lock it up. I'm gonna say my top two would be, in no particular order, Mr. Riggs and Mr. Nelson.
President White?
My top two would be in this order, Lars Erdal and Brent Halick.
Yes, you've taken your notes, but managers, there are five managers who have identified Erdal as one of, either one or one of two choices. There are three managers who have identified Riggs. And there are three managers who have identified Brim Halick. And then one manager's identified Nelson.
So there's a, the weight is falling over toward the end of Mr. Erdal.
I'll just ask the question, could we, as a board, support Mr. Erdal?
Manager Blix?
Well, just, I'll just, you know, because I've said this before, and so it won't come as a surprise. I'll say that I do not, I'm not going to vote for anybody at this time, because I think that this is a decision that should be made after we know who's going to be on the board in the future. That's why I feel strongly that this decision needs to be postponed for a month or two. So I'm not gonna vote for anybody tonight, so.
What changed between September 11th, where we started this path, and soon after that when we passed a job description?
Voting for a job description is different than voting for an administrator.
I agree. We actually passed a resolution setting everything in motion to hire somebody which was looking at the present.
Well, that doesn't mean that we need to do that tonight.
Okay.
If we do that tonight, though, it would be a good, a good thing to have board unanimity or near unanimity. It would set a good example for, or a good, example is the wrong word, but set a good path for the hire. And it would indicate a confidence in that person. And so you're not indicating a, well, a dislike of the people, but you're saying that you just don't want to do it now. So even if we do do it now, would you nonetheless vote on the candidates?
Well, actually, Mr. Erdal was not one of my choices anyway, so.
But would you vote?
So therefore, I, you know, it doesn't matter, my vote doesn't matter either way. The fact of voting matters. Okay, so you want me to vote against the candidate? Is that what you're saying?
I wish that you would vote for a candidate. I wish that you would vote for a candidate.
Oh, okay, well, I'm just saying I'm not going to, you know.
Abstention is an option.
But again, Madam Chair.
Magic Sol.
This is not about any one of the candidates. It's about you not wanting to do it at this time.
Right, but I-
You've expressed a preference, but you're not, you don't, you don't agree that we should be doing it this time. That's your primary reason for not voting.
But also, at the same time, I don't know that I would be voting for Mr. Erdal either.
No, I, right, you know, but your abstention isn't about, isn't about the candidates that were before. Your abstention is completely separate from who the candidates are. Because if we're going to have a vote, what you're, if I hear what you're saying, you would not vote for Mr. Erdal because he's not your first choice.
Correct.
And, you know, you, if we did a polling poll, you would say, Mr. Mahab, based on what you said, what you said earlier. I think that the additional question is, great, that's your first choice. But the follow-up question would be, you've expressed your preference, and that doesn't seem to be the majority of the board, all other things set aside. Then the question would be, is that person who did come forward and did get a majority, regardless of the number of the majority, would you support that person that gets selected and offered the job, whatever the process is? You know, would you if candidate X gets approved by a majority of the people here, hopefully more than four, would you support that party and not undermine them?
Point of affirmation.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think- Sorry, I was wrong when I said it, I'm sorry.
I totally, I follow what you said.
You know, I think this is probably the most important vote we will cast in any of our time on this board. Much like last week, there was a legislature, and this week there is a different legislature. After the board points, there will be a different board. I don't know who will be on this board. But we will be constituted with a makeup. I'm not gonna foretell what that makeup is, that's some shadowy future. Right now, we're here, we're seven people. We have the choice to, we have a choice that we can make. We have, we have a candidate for us who's received five votes. I would like to, I'd like to call a vote and do a final poll with each member casting one vote.
Are you making a motion, Manager Shekelton?
I'm not making a motion, I'm asking for a poll. I think, I think that depending on the outcome of that poll, I will make a motion.
So what is the question for the poll?
Who is your top candidate?
Mr. Smith?
Manager Olson?
Who is my top candidate for this job, or who is my top candidate of these four people? What is-
You have a choice of four names before you.
And if I was going to pick one of those four names, who would that person be? Well, of these four candidates, it would probably be Lars Erdal.
Manager Cassal?
Erdal.
Manager Blix?
I'm abstaining.
Manager Miller?
Erdal.
Manager Shekelton?
Erdal.
Manager Calkins?
I'm conflicted, so I'm going to abstain.
President White?
Erdal.
Madam Chair?
Manager Shekelton.
I would like to make a motion directing Dave Unmott and Louis Smith to-
He's making a motion.
To meet with, actually, we just voted.
No.
No, we all voted. It was a poll.
There was no motion on the floor.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to ratify the results of that poll with a board vote. On all in favor of ratifying that motion, say aye. It will be that the motion has-
Legal? President White, I have to admit confusion about the process.
I thought you hadn't finished the motion yet myself.
The motion, the motion was to request a vote of ratification of the poll.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
Just a suggestion, and there are a variety of ways that you could operate, but it seems to me that if the, if your desire is to have the board move forward and have Mr. Unmott and legal counsel meet with the candidate, preferred candidate seems to be Mr. Erdal, then a motion could be to so direct that process and to bring back a recommended contract arrangement that would meet the interests of the district and the candidate for the board's consideration.
Then, if I may, I will make that motion. I have not made the motion. The motion would be to-
Whatever it's-
The motion would be to direct David Unmott and Louis Smith to meet with this candidate to negotiate a hiring contract that protects the interests of both the district and a new administrator, and to bring it back to consideration as soon as readily, as soon as ready. And with the caveat, please work expeditiously, and next week will be great.
Point of affirmation, by this candidate you mean Mr. Lars Erdal?
Yes.
Is there a second in the motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second is a discussion. Manager Calkins?
I'm not gonna beat up on anybody tonight. It's not worth that effort. I think people pretty much feel where I, how I feel about the whole process. However, I do believe that, and again, this has no reflection on any other candidates. I think that two of the candidates are, will do a very good job, in my opinion, and stand out above the others. However, and I've heard it said that it, you know, it makes a difference what the composition of the board would be in two months or three months or whatever it is. I don't think that really matters. I think that what's important to me is that we have a, very obviously, we have a board that isn't getting along very well. And the point has been made such that it's become something I expect to hear at every meeting I go to, that, you know, the board is almost always unanimous in its votes except for things having to do with personnel decisions. Which comes across to me anyways as minimizing personnel decisions. And in reality, it's probably the other way around. Is that personnel decisions, and especially when we're talking about a district administrator, as somebody said, is the most important, one of the most, it is the most important decision that the board makes. Because it's the only position that we directly hire. So to me, the issue is, is that the board, I continue to believe that the board made a very bad decision in terminating the previous district administrator. And that opinion has, I, has been emphasized by the process that has taken place this evening. In that, for me, the comparison always has to go back to, okay, who did we previously have as a district administrator compared to the four candidates that were before us this evening? And would be, would the district or will the district be better off because of what has transpired over the past eight months, is it now? And I have still yet to see the board deal with the ramifications of that decision. And I also keep hearing infinitum, that, you know, it's, that's all past, it's time to get over it, it's time to move on. And it's important to do all of that for the good of the district. I believe exactly the opposite. I think that for the district to just move on like nothing has happened and not work to correct the- and not work to correct the differences among board members prior to hiring a, a new district administrator, would be unconscionable. It would be a disservice to the person that we'd be hiring. I think it would be a disservice to staff. That is, it's just bad government to do that. And government does it all the time. And that's one of my biggest concerns about government as it exists today, whether it be at the federal level, the state level, or the local level. I think that's a, a really bad attitude. Move on, it's over, the damage has been done, but move on. And there need to be consequences. And I won't participate in that. As a, as a board member, the responsibility now is in, in my lap. And I'm, I'm not willing to say, just move on and forget it. I think that would be bad for the district in the long run, damaging for the district in the long run. So while we're in a different situation, and we had these four candidates before us, I think there are candidates here that would be very good, more than just adequate in the cases of some of them, because I'm not, I'm not looking for adequate. But that's not the situation that we're in as I see it. And I see it as being two very different things. One is, you're working from a clean slate, you have candidates that come, you make a decision, and you make a decision. Relative to the candidates we have, I'd like to see more discussion and give and take on why people think these particular candidates are the good ones, to really kind of flesh that, flesh that out more. But that's not gonna happen. But that's not the situation we're in. We are in a situation where the district, in my mind, is in a very bad place. And that doesn't, that doesn't lie with staff at all. We have, you've heard it, I think, from the candidates, and I think you've heard it from board members. We have an incredible, hardworking, dedicated staff. Everything that I say has to do with the board up here at the front. And a board that I feel, um, is abdicating its responsibility with the attitude of, yeah, if something's happened, it's just time to move on. And as I say, I think that would be, um, really bad for the district, and it would be a disservice to any candidate that we would hire. And I'll leave it at that.
Manager Shekelton?
I've always appreciated your thoughtful and deliberate approach to watershed management. And I think you're absolutely right, that in an ideal world, our board would have addressed our issues prior to hiring a district administrator. We released our previous administrator in April. At the end of May, there was a retreat, and one of the subject matters to discuss was board relationships. But you weren't there. I could pull the minutes if you prefer.
I wasn't there, I wasn't there for a very good reason.
You were not there, so you could not discuss this. So fast forward through the summer, and in October, there was another retreat. And if we were to heal our wounds, we would have to bear our wounds. And that takes guts to say, this is how I'm, I feel aggrieved. And this is how we can move forward together. And we did that in October. But of course, there was a reporter in the room who reported our aggri- our grievances. So, instead of helping to put a salve on the wound, you made the wound deeper. But that's fine, that's a fine tactic. On top of all of that, we attempt to retain a mediator, and you have voted consistently against him at each time you had the opportunity to. So while I think you're right, we, we should address our issues as a board. There's been no progress on that, and that's not for lack of attempting. So to that end, it's incumbent on us to do, to be good, good stewards of our money and good stewards of how our staff are managed and move forward today. And I, I will thank you for, for participating tonight and asking good questions and offering good insights, because that is how you've always approached this watershed. But in terms of healing this board, I've seen nothing.
Any other discussion? Thank you both. Are we ready to vote? All of us in favor of the motion?
Do you want a roll call?
Roll call, certainly.
Manager Olson?
No.
Manager Cassol?
Aye.
Manager Blix?
No.
Andrew Miller?
Aye.
Manager Shekelton?
Yes.
Manager Colkins?
Opposed.
President White?
Yes.
Four to three.
Motion carries. So, we will have you individuals work together?
And, and, Madam President, members, the next step is for me to contact the, so I would ask the group, if I could, not to say anything, I mean, because...
Two reporters here.
Well, but I know...
A reporter and a television camera.
It, it, the worst thing that can happen is when they find out by someone else.
Certainly.
You know, and it's midnight, so I'm not calling them tonight. But I will call them tomorrow morning, try to reach them as soon as I can. You know, if they're there, I'll talk to them. If not, I'll leave a message, have them call me. They're expecting a call. So I will tell three of them that, uh, they are not the preferred choice. I won't say anything else. I will tell one of them that, uh, we have been authorized to sit down with him to negotiate a, an agreement that's in the best interest of the district and of the candidates and bring it back as expeditiously as we can. I don't know when that will be. I, I can't commit to next week. I understand your, your, the, I mean, I get that, but, you know. So, that's what I'll do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
There is no other business before the boards, and we are adjourned.
It's still January seven.
Oh, yeah.
I think your question is going to get to say.
Yeah, it'll be the eight.